Our first order of business is an executive session for attorney-client privilege.
We have to figure justification and can't just be.
For how long?
Well, attorney-client privilege on what? We'll have to specify.
Virgil? How long will we need and who's?
Legal matters of a confidential nature.
Yeah. Matters of a confidential nature.
And then you have to say when you'll come back in.
Yeah.
Right.
Legal matters of confidential nature.
Now, Sally, how long? You have to say the time that the meeting will re-convene.
Right.
To include Carol Hearn, Jolynn Foster.
Yeah, previous board of trustees should be included.
Those only two? And Karen, okay. And fifteen minutes attorney. Ayers. And you think fifteen minutes will work?
And yourself.
And myself.
Yeah.
Fifteen minutes and we can extend it if we need.
Yeah, I have to, we'll have to come back, okay? You ready? Ready for me to do this? Okay. I move that we move into executive session for attorney-client privilege with the following members, the board of trustees, attorney Gary Ayers, Virgil Watson, Carol Hearn, Jolynn Foster, Karen Zeller, to return at, let's see, thirty-three. Forty, at five forty-eight. Is that, is that close?
We have a second?
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded, we go into executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? We're adjourned into.
I move that we return to executive session for a period of, let's see, what is it?
Yeah.
What is it, forty-eight? That'd be, how about six oh five?
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Turn six oh five.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Yes, he just verbally did.
We didn't want to pick him up and carry him in here, we were getting tired of carrying him.
Got everybody in here?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay.
Old business.
Yeah.
Does he approve the minutes?
Hmm? Hmm, she's got them over there.
Okay.
Do we have the minutes from the last meeting? Do you want us to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah. Better. I also move that we approve the minutes from, uh, May twenty-fourth.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, any further comments? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Thank you. That's our passes. Old business. Um, ICU capabilities. Don't have, we don't have Virgil.
Virgil on that?
One of the thing that's, one of the things that has been discussed is to return our ICU um, for the doctors to be able to use it as it was intended when it was originally built. He's gone.
He's gone? Oh.
Okay, well.
Was it, was it coming back as, as the original?
As the original ICU to?
Which was? How many beds?
Well, there's four beds in ICU.
Four beds and two step down.
And two step downs.
Step down as in?
Uh, they're not ready to go to the medical surgical floor, but they're not ready to leave the intensive care unit. So it's kind of a step in between both units.
Uh, how, I remember Virgil saying it was only used nine percent of the time.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that it has to be staffed by?
How, yeah.
It has to be staffed twenty-four seven.
Yeah. Does, does it have to be staffed? I mean, can't?
Empty or full?
Yeah, you need, come up here. They don't see you, they see us.
You need to state.
They see my backside though.
Just state your name and then.
I'm Tracy Austin, Director of Mercy.
Did you want to follow up on that?
In, go ahead.
What, what I wanna, wanna know is can you have staff there that is capable?
And available.
And available with the staff that you have? And then, like, I know, I know ICU takes a lot, a lot of equipment in it. Is there a possibility of having, excuse me, one room? Available?
Currently at this time, we have absorbed three different rooms over on the med-surg unit that are capable of an ICU patient. However, those rooms do not have air piped to them, which is necessary for a ventilated patient.
Okay.
So, um, we do have canisters that will last approximately six hours if we have to have a patient on the ventilator. Um, the only thing I could suggest if we wanted to move it back to where it was, um, I think that we could overtake the rooms two oh one and two oh two, which is on the short hallway from the med-surg unit. So, I mean, and those rooms do have air to them. So we could, in essence, make those rooms into an ICU beds.
And how much would that cost us to do, re, put those back into ICU? Would, do you have that option yet? Do you know that yet?
I, I don't know what the cost is, gonna be more manpower.
More manpower and you can't use what you have?
We, we have the equipment.
Okay.
All we would have to do is the manpower to put it back.
We have visited with almost every doctor that uses the hospital primarily, and they have all indicated they want the ICU back because they don't have to transfer as many patients out if they get the ICU back. Um, and.
And I understand that. Um, one of the things that is problematic for us is the amount of nurses that apply to the hospital. Not necessarily because we have a bad name per se, um, but they're wanting to go work in Wichita where they can make a lot more money. Um, and to have a fully functioning ICU that is covered twenty-four seven, we're gonna need at least five nurses. And we honestly do not have the applications. I mean, that's just, we even have problems staffing the med-surg unit. Um, you know, ER, we did very easily to, um, restack those, that unit because we have people that's making those telephone calls and saying, hey, we've got an opening, would you like to come? So, um, an ICU is just a little bit different criteria. They don't want to work anyplace else but into the intensive care unit. So you have, you've got two nurses essentially sitting around all day long doing nothing in the event that.
They don't have a patient?
Right.
Okay.
We do have, um, staff on med-surg, we're not fully staffed over there. However, um, we have been able to use some of the nursing staff over there to sit with an ICU patient. And that's not a ICU patient that's gonna have four or five drips and, um, a lot of other things going on. So it's, it's a little bit past their capabilities. Um, I am fully staffed on house supervisors. Um, and they, um, are asked to step into that role in the event that we leave the ICU open and there's not enough staff on med-surg, so.
We do have all the equipment and everything is still piped into the walls and nothing was changed there.
Nothing's changed. OB is the same, we're OBs at currently, there is nothing, I mean, we could move it back in there.
Okay.
So the, the question that I wanna, this is Dan Yerkovich, uh, and, and, uh, unfortunately I can't be there, but what if, so we, we would be required to have four nurses full-time in order to run ICU? Approximately, what should a nurse in, that is in ICU, what should their pay be annually?
Do, do you have that, you had to, you had to say?
Or how would say, I mean, what should it be? So that's, cause that's our real cost. What we hear, not just from doctors, but also from the staff in the emergency department, and we ask why are there three hundred transfers? And a big part of it is that, you know, sometimes there isn't an ICU or the swing, you know, people they could swing over there available for somebody we could for sure treat even at a low level of ICU, but we're just not, they're not sure, so they send them out. So we need to know what it will cost to fix that problem and see if it is a problem worth fixing.
Um, you're gonna need to pay them at least twenty-seven to thirty-two dollars an hour.
Okay.
And I will tell you that that's gonna be more than a lot of what the current nurses that has longevity at the hospitals are wanting.
And so that might cause an issue there too.
Yes.
Good to know.
What, what, what is the, well, down, down lower on the agenda? What is the current, can you tell us what the current wage is as, on an average of the nurses on the floor? Is, is it?
Twenty to twenty-six probably.
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, that's what the, the last item, one of the last items, there's an item that I, I wanted to put out, whether we really are talking about a cost of living, but one of the other problems I heard is that with turnover recruitment, it's difficult. And so what, because of, and I, and what I heard the problem is, or a big part of it, is that the, the amount of, that we can pay is lower than people can get somewhere else. So we need to look at, we need to look at staff pay to see how close we are in line and how much it's gonna, I mean, we, we can't really, uh, uh, we, we're, we're looking at ways to cut money, but at the same time, there are areas where you have to spend money and without good staff, you can't do much, I mean, you need a hospital, we have good staff, but it sounds like we need more of that.
Can, can you get that? Dan, I'm gonna ask you if she can get the, an idea about, at our next meeting? How much?
Yeah, or at least give us a, you know, what's our, what's, and who are we talking with? I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Tracy, the Director of Nursing.
How, how much it might cost us?
Okay.
To get the, fi, just five.
Well, I, I think we also need to direct Chris, Chris to get a, uh, you know, what's the average that we're paying for a one-year, five-year, ten-year, or twenty or something, maybe the Director of Nursing, maybe you can come up with that data of what we're paying, but I think we need to go to HR and, and we'll just cover that last item, but what priority will it be? What I want us to discuss down there, but, um, we need to know what, what a, a good wage would be for a similar hospital. And we, we need to figure that out if, if we can even get there.
Can, can you find that out? Okay. Similar like Coffeyville and?
Yeah, Coffeyville, obviously we have Williamsburg Road, that's a similar economy, or one of them making Wellington or?
Anthony, which are smaller. It's not, it?
Yeah, we need.
Go over to Chanu or something, I, I don't know if you can name a hospital, but something like that.
We need hospital, like ours, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Chanu.
Can you get that first?
I, I think Iowa has a hospital somewhere, but just, whatever, I mean, we need to find out
Or close to?
how far we are off, or maybe, maybe it really isn't a problem, that our wages aren't off, there's other issues.
Well, and, and, and I will say too, that a lot of these smaller hospitals that are the same size as us don't have an ICU. Nor do they have an OB department.
Okay.
They have a med-surg floor, period.
Okay.
They just have med-surg?
Yes.
Emergency med-surg and that's it?
Yeah.
And what is med-surg? I'm not familiar.
The medical surgical floor.
Okay.
So if you were to be admitted for what have ya, that's where you'd go.
Okay. All right. So we have the capability for an ICU, but?
We don't have staff.
Is that? We need four beds. Is that what, well, if you can?
Four nurses.
I'm just trying to hear.
Oh, no, I mean, is that, is that?
We could have up to, but we don't.
Well, no, because the, okay, if you, we've got three rooms over on med-surg that we could currently use right now that does not have air.
Don't have air.
We have two rooms down the short hallway that you could put a bed each in. I mean, they're large rooms, but, um, two beds is, that's too tight, especially for a group patient.
That's too much, for ICU, yeah.
But they have all the stuff in the walls that they need.
But they have all the stuff.
But we could use that if, in case.
So we could have two.
So we could have two.
But we don't have.
That would, that would help.
We don't have the nurses though, right?
We don't have the nurses, no.
Right, right at this moment, yeah.
However, though, if you had a two-bed ICU, one person could do that.
Per shift?
Per shift.
Yeah.
Twelve hours a week.
Are there nurses, are there?
Some days a week.
Are there nurses that could be promoted or repositioned without hurting another department? I don't know if it's a promotion, I don't know, I don't wanna say it that way if that's wrong, but that could be. Are there other nurses we could use there, or is every department?
Every department's pretty lame.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm not sure that the current nurses that are employed, especially, uh, on, well, throughout the house, I don't think any of them would wanna take on that job.
It's quite a.
Okay, that's not what they wanna do, and that's, that's fine, I understand that, that's, uh, just something.
Do they have to have special training? Well, it's a special portion for that special job.
Good to know if that's what. If that would be, uh, something we could do, but we definitely, you're saying, we don't have the staff for that at this point.
Not safely, no, and if other departments got busy, then you, if the patient to staff ratio would be too high, be too great.
Okay.
Okay.
So. So to restore ICU, to full ICU, we definitely have a cost. And.
To restore ICU, that we would have a cost of employees.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the main cost.
That, that would be the main cost, yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions?
Any more, Dan?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thanks.
I think, we didn't put you on the hot seat, did we?
No, I meant to bring my fan with me and I forgot it.
Okay.
And Patricia always helps me out, so.
All right.
So, the next item would be the SC, KC, and WMA operation expenses and we're looking, um, we need, Holly is looking into that to see, uh, which is the CFO, um, to see where that is and where it can be um, fine-tuned a little more than it is. And, uh, so.
Fine-tune what, in what way?
The expenses that are, that are being spent right now and to see and more so the WMA, so.
Well, is it, uh, I'll chime in here too. Um, and Virgil, is he, is Mr. Watson there?
Yes.
Okay, um, and I know it's probably a confidential contract, but could we see the contract?
Sure.
Contract we have when we bought?
Yes.
Or Winfield Medical?
Yes.
And, and, and look at that, and then also, um, yeah, I guess that's, that one I'd like to see it.
Okay, not a problem.
Anything else, Dan?
Uh, I can't think right now.
Okay. So we could look at that at the, the next meeting, okay? That'd be great. Um, we talked about billing and coding audit.
Okay.
There is a, um, offer to come and help us out uh, from TransWise, um, out of Dallas, right, Dan?
What's the name?
Yeah, Dallas area, yeah.
TransWise.
TransWise?
And they do, they have spoken with, uh, uh, Virgil before and, um, talked to him about coming down. Uh, they have offered that service again for billing and coding so that we can kinda get an idea of the numbers that are coming through and what's being collected and how that efficiency and how long it takes to get it collected. And, uh, so I think we'd like to accept their offer to come and do the, um, the audit for us, they're gonna hook up remote and, uh, they're doing it at this level, uh, at no charge. Uh, to kinda get an idea of where we are and, uh.
Now, they do other hospitals too.
They do other hospitals, they do clinics, um, and they can get in and get out, uh, and then give us a report on what, uh, what they see is, uh, working and what they think we should change. Um, they also are a, um, their director, I'm not sure what his title, official title is, whether he's a COO or CEO. And is a, the reason he's interested in helping is because he's a graduate of Arc City.
Oh, yes, I read that, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, he said, I wanna, I wanna help uh, in any way that I can and I offer this service to you.
Okay, I have a question. We, you have billing and coding audit, I mean, company now, right?
Right.
With, with this billing and coding audit, what different will he be doing than what that company has already done?
Well, the last time I talked to him, he wanted to evaluate how effective they were. We were at that point in time, we didn't have it outsourced at that point in time.
That was way back.
Way back in twenty sixteen.
Okay.
And so, we have contracted with TrueBridge to do our coding and billing. And we showed you the heat map at the last board meeting. Uh, you know, and I don't have a problem with anybody that wants to come in, take a look at what we do, we're always open for improvement. You know, something that we've worked hard at over the last three years. We always wanna find ways that we can fine-tune and do things better. I think you have a pretty good idea of what it's gonna find, but, uh, this would give us a second opinion of, of what we need to do and how we need to change things.
And this isn't gonna cost us anything?
No.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for this?
Uh,
Well.
Think we'd better wait.
What, Dan?
For.
Oh, I, I wanna be very specific and ask the question, uh, to Virgil, and maybe he doesn't know, but I do know that, like, that this company did come and offer cer, the same service before. And, uh, I wanna hear from Virgil specifically, is what, I know you just said we're open to anything, but what is the real? Maybe what was the downside then, or is there a downside at this point?
Well, we got right down to the brass tags and it wasn't gonna be free. It's gonna cost us sixty thousand dollars. And we just had the Quorum report that we paid big money for.
Oh, he was gonna charge then?
Yes.
Oh.
I spent, we spent some time with him.
Had to make difference now.
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
We spent some time, Mr. Chairman, uh, with him, gosh, I man, I would imagine a full day, day and a half of him walking around the hospital, answering questions, uh, talking to our people, interviewing our billing staff, uh, talk to Holly. And, uh, when, when he gave us the synopsis of what he was wanting to do, or we really didn't get a report, he says, well, if we're gonna come back and help you implement the things that we found, then it's gonna cost us sixty thousand dollars. And so I declined at that point in time and decided that we did not want that done.
Okay. Well, the, the agreement now would be that this would cost us nothing.
For just the audit?
But if he can't, for the audit, but if he can improve, he would like us to be, this was his give me, and I, and I understand this, this, I, I would like to be at the top of the list if you make a change from what we find.
Right.
And I believe, and he said his cost would be three point one percent of the bill. And I think, what, what are we, right now, I wrote it down at the last one and, and, um.
Okay, same, same, same amount?
We're paying three point five right now, correct?
Three point three.
Three point five, somewhere in there, and you know, that was what we based our negotiations with TrueBridge off of, is
Okay.
how can, we wanted to make it budget neutral. We needed to find their first offer, Holly did, because we wanted to gain enough improvement so that it didn't cost, end up costing us anything. And we just could not get there.
Hopefully, excellent. Okay. That's all I wanted to ask, but is, is there any other downside, is there a reason we should not do this, or can you warn us about something?
Yes, I, I, I bring them in.
I, I'd just be curious why, why he changed his mind? From then to now.
You know, I, I, we did the preliminary, you know, like I said, we talked.
It's like throwing a lure out, fishing.
Could be.
And so then when we came back to say, hey, you know, we, we'd like to take over your process and implement these changes.
Nobody does.
We just went through a form assessment, and I just didn't feel like we needed it at that point in time.
Okay. I understand that, so.
Okay. Um, so do we need a motion to do it?
Well, I'll make a motion, we tried, I mean, it's a free deal and it's not gonna hurt to see what we, you know, come up with, I mean, we might learn something, we might not.
As long as it's free, I'm, I'm for it, so.
Okay.
Takes some staff time, you know, it's.
Well, yeah.
Getting them hooked up, you know, if they're gonna do it remotely, it, it sounds like it's easy, but it's gonna take some IT time.
Yeah, okay.
Coordination with medical records, we'll have to exchange business associate agreements.
Right.
You know, yada, yada, yada.
So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I, I, one more thing.
Okay.
So, uh, if we find that it is taking, gonna take, uh, um, a significant investment of staff time or IT time, would you let us know?
Yes.
And we can reconsider? And by significant, I will let you be the judge, but you, I mean, you come through and, and as you start getting into it, you say, wow, this is gonna take, you know, this is gonna take ten hours from this person and five hours here and three there, and we just can't do that? Without you helping us as a board of trustees, let us know?
Okay.
So we can, we can adjust. Cause I, I don't wanna make this a major burden for us to get something free. It's like, uh, my, my dog is the most expensive free dog I ever got.
Yeah.
By the time we got shots and spaying and all that stuff, so you can get something free that costs you something, so I'm, I'm aware of that.
I, I will communicate.
Right.
Okay.
And I will stay in close contact about that.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any additional comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay. Sales tax promotion. You wanted.
You, we all, we might have time to talk about.
We've got several dates lined out, Virgil, on a Thursday, we're gonna, you know, do it at different spots in the town and so forth, and uh, I don't, you know, we might wanna take this and discuss it, you know, maybe the Tuesday before, meeting on Thursday, just that only. Cause I think you're gonna, probably gonna bring some staff in too on this thing, cause it's gonna have to be done, you know, Clayton's stock will be around this year, isn't it?
Correct.
So, do you have anybody in mind, how we're gonna?
Well, we have, you know, Krista Corello has been helping in Clayton's spot, but Holly is gifted in explaining things like this.
And Virgil.
We did thirty meetings, once that sales tax we did.
Right.
As few as one person, as large as a hundred fifty, you know, and we went to every opportunity we got to speak in front of someone.
Do you have a list of all those, I mean, all the locations you went to and so?
I believe so, yeah.
Well, I would recommend maybe, uh, having that meeting on the Tuesday, the twenty-six, four-hour Thursday, the hospital meeting. And to bring all that information to us and all the meetings you went to and, you know, who did what and so forth, and we'll just go through this process. I know we're gonna have some town hall meetings, the commission ourselves, but we're also gonna have to break it up into smaller groups too. I know we're gonna have some town hall meetings, the commission ourselves, but we're also gonna have to break it up into smaller groups too and so forth. And we need to get all the players together and.
We hit all of your civic organizations and everlasting one, you know, we had an audience with just about everybody. Went to your nursing homes, Presbyterian primarily, you know, and then, uh, we, we spent some time, you know, just individual invites, like the senior center, we had a meeting. Then we had a town hall where we had a number of people that came. We explained what we're trying to do, uh, but all total, we did about thirty, you know, and it wasn't easy. And then we did a door to door campaign.
Yeah.
Uh, that we walked the streets, we also had our volunteers take the, um, registration list and call everybody that was registered to vote in the city of Arc, Kansas City. And they were meticulous about it enough to where they had written down, was it a yes or a no, or they didn't get a hold of. And they predicted that it would be an eighty, twenty vote before, and everybody's telling me it's not gonna pass, it's not gonna pass. And we're all just, and we think they're wrong, you know, our information says by the people that are registered, uh, that we think that it's gonna be about eighty, twenty vote, and that's exactly what it ended up being.
Oh, well, I, I think we need to do the same.
I, I'll chime in here, who was the main person in charge, was that Clayton?
Clayton was the main person in charge, every time I said something, I lost his two votes.
I can't imagine that, sir.
I, I don't see why, why we can't ask him to help in a volunteer basis.
No, and, but we, we feel like we're capable enough to.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think we need somebody.
Oh, yeah.
It was that someone there, you know, uh, that would help as well. Something we're up to.
We need, we need to delegate, we need to have somebody who is the spearhead. And if it can't be Clayton, uh, I, I guess you're, you're throwing Chris out, Carrillo, but is that the right person?
Krista.
As far as the amount of time it's gonna take, or?
Well, you know, Mr. Chairman, we have a great team at this point in time, you know, and this team is, uh, rallied behind the hospital in just about every situation, and so.
Excellent, yeah, oh, yeah.
And once, once we know what the basket hand is, uh, we'll be more capable of handling it.
And I think that the main two issues, Virgil, I think that we need to stress to the public and stuff is that, that, uh, that going with the one cent indefinitely for healthcare, that's the only way that we have a chance to renew our bonds in two thousand nineteen or beyond that. And that's the best scenario that our bond council, uh, financial guy came up with, you know, for us for the long term. And then the other one is that we're gonna lower the, 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 uh, tax by a half percent, so, uh, too. And the people needs to know that, understand that, I mean, we're gonna raise, you know, one cent, but we're gonna take off one and a half cent type thing. And we've gotta stress those two issues, cause that's the only thing we've got a shot at, we're doing those bonds from seven percent or seven and a half percent down to more normal rates from three to four percent, you know.
You know, I've had, had a number of people contacted already, saying we've given it a kiss of death because we're making unlikely bonds. Uh, I, I think we can't listen to that.
Yeah.
Go out, do our thing and educate the public.
Well, I mean, we have to give the education to them, we do. If it fails, uh, you know, if it fails, then the next thing, it's gonna be property tax, nobody wants their property tax go up, I mean, it's.
Look, as I understand it, you correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we're gonna do this now, but the, uh, a half cent doesn't really come off. If this is unsuccessful, it doesn't really come off until twenty nineteen, right? And so, we might have another opportunity to do it again, you know, sometimes it will take more than one, uh, educational session to get everybody. I think we've got a good chance, everybody I've talked to that is supportive of the hospital has said, you know, we're gonna take the tax down a half cent to just a one cent, and we're going to save some interest, uh.
Well, that saving, the, the point I think we need to stress is that, that the, that if we can get, renew the bonds, that, 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 that we're, we'll pay a lot less interest and it goes to principal, and that's the best buck for the people of Arc, Kansas City or surrounding areas, uh, you know, outside the areas that we're, you know, that's, that's how we're gonna lower the debt, you know, in other words, we're gonna cut out the interest and, and that money will go to principal, so.
I realize it's difficult for them to understand because it was for me.
Sure.
But I, after some research and listening to the individuals that have come in, it's the only thing that makes sense.
Yep, you know, we did have some yard signs that we did, one cent makes sense.
Oh, boy, well, and.
And they were effective, you know, my granddaughter was out, that's the only thing she wanted to do is to carry the yard signs to the meeting.
Okay.
And so, I had a whole family.
Well, if you have a group that, uh, can do that.
Oh, go ahead, Duane, sorry.
If you have a group that can do that, I think, um, find a leader for that group.
Sure.
And then get, get started on all our information for, that we need. Well, we still need to have that meeting, and I think we need to have it on that Tuesday, and then we can talk about it Thursday at the hospital meeting and stuff. Yeah, that's okay, yeah, we can do that, I think. Get all this stuff ironed out, because we don't have enough people here tonight to talk about, I mean, you know.
Well, I, I'll chime in here, I think if we wait till that Tuesday, we will be behind. We will not get it ironed out and we'll have a bad meeting. Um, just because that's just the way I think it would go.
What do you think we need to, Dan?
Well, I think, um, so Virgil, who, who do you think you're going, you will want to assign this duty to? To head, spearhead this?
Oh, it'll probably be, uh, Krista Carrillo will be my spearhead, and she does a good job directing the rest of us to do what we need to do.
Okay.
And Holly's very good about making sure we're all turning.
Do you know if, do you know if, uh, Krista's ever had chickenpox? I'm just kidding, if you don't know that, you could share it.
I don't know that, that's.
I would be willing.
Patient information.
To, uh, I, I still cannot do a full day without getting, and already while talking, I'm starting to, to have a difficulty here. But, you know, maybe as the chairman of the board, I need to go talk with her.
Well, she's contacted both my folks.
And, uh, and, and set out the game plan and then pass that along to how the board of trustees will be involved. Cause these are kinda things, we're gonna have to come up with maybe a slideshow and even have yard signs printed out before that meeting for people to take, and, and those don't take just a day to get printed up.
And Dan's got some really cool sayings, do it, Dan.
Dan?
I, I do, I do, I have some ideas.
If, if we do it a week on the twenty-first before the twenty-eighth, you think that'd be enough time to get?
Well, when I.
If not?
Well, as you know from ordering yard signs, when you order them, you, you got, yeah, you need at least a week.
At least a week.
Before we can order yard signs, we need to find out where to get money.
Well, I think if we get, if we get that meeting at least a week ahead, the, the signs can come later, I think, I mean.
Yeah, well, let's just, it, so what I'm gonna ask is, can we just make it on the nineteenth as our, part of our city commission meeting, put it on the agenda?
Okay.
And, and maybe if, if, uh, if, and I, I will plan in the late morning, if possible, if that works, to go see Krista.
Okay.
Maybe, and, and, uh, but the one thing is that when you have shingles, you can give someone chickenpox if they haven't been vaccinated. And so, I don't know if I should go to the hospital.
Call her on the phone.
And see her there.
We'll take a phone call.
Did?
Yeah, we can take a phone call, so maybe I'll just call her and we'll talk, but I, I'll plan on, i- if that's okay with everybody else on the board, I, I would.
Sure, that's fine, Dan, I, I just want, we did, I, we just gotta have a meeting fairly quick, you know.
So, is that?
How, what's the agenda like?
The nineteenth, we do that again, which is our own city commission meeting, and, and we'll, we'll bring the ideas. And I did have two ideas that I, that I told Canyon, and for yard signs, I thought, one would be, uh, pay less, vote yes. And another one is, it's the best way to pay, vote yes. And the education line that is, you know, obviously we're going from one and a half to one cent. And, uh, and then the other is, uh, it's better, if we don't pay with sales tax, we're gonna pay with property tax.
Okay.
All right.
So, but I don't care, I'll give it to a real marketing genius if that's better. But I'll plan to talk to her tomorrow.
What were you gonna say about our meeting on?
Well, we had penciled in our city manager updates to, you know, preview the town hall meetings and try to get a few more locations set. Do you want this under new business instead?
What do you think, Mayor?
I, I couldn't hear.
You want it under new business?
Yeah, we'll put it under new business.
Okay, fine.
And we'll, we'll call it, uh, you know, the sales tax promotion or.
Okay.
Okay. So, we'll work through that one.
I mean, is that okay with everyone? I, I don't wanna just, somebody else says aye, I really wanna do this instead.
No, that's, that's. No, Dan, that's, that's good, I, I like the idea, we're getting, we're starting a week earlier than what I was gonna do, so.
What'd you say, Karen?
I'll be on the ba- box next time.
Okay.
Okay. We're done with that one?
Yep.
Move on.
So, we're kind of interested in creating an order of priorities that needs to happen at the hospital. Things that need to be talked about and, uh, that need to kinda be set in for long term and short term. So, Dan, you kinda led that on that, so.
Well, what I really, the reason I came up with those is I, I just asked everybody, what do you think is important that we need to know? And these were some of the things that came back, and, uh, so I, I'll talk about them and then I won't say anything and let you guys, uh, talk about it, um. Uh, so, one is, I think number one there, I gotta get back to the agenda here. Um, but I think the number one was the, uh, cost of, uh, cola for employees. And I don't know if we really wanna necessarily, if it, if it's a cola, but, I mean, it goes along with what we mentioned with ICU. That, uh, one of the feedbacks that I hear from, I've heard from just about the gamut, from people on staff, uh, from, well, it's just that, that it's difficult for us to have employee retention and have been raises often enough. And that maybe some of the tenured people, the pay isn't equal to what they might get somewhere else. I, I guess what I really want is a pay, is a pay audit. You know, are, what, what are we doing and, and, uh, you know, you know, what do nurses get paid? What does a maintenance person get paid at a likely hospital or, or a similar hospital? And, you know, how far are we really behind, or is it really not a real problem? It's just a perceived problem because of the financial pension we've been under.
So, do you have someone who can do that kind of?
Yeah, we talked about it, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And so, maybe you could speak to that too, is that, uh, what is the reality of situation in our pay? I mean, are, are we really struggling to keep up, or have we not given anyone raises? Has there been any, I know that, and, and one problem too, our, our executive management took a five percent pay cut, and you can't do that forever or you lose people.
Well, you know, it's something that's been a problem for this facility for a long time. And, uh, you know, it's not, didn't happen yesterday or last year or last three years, it's been going on for the last five to seven years. Especially when we got out to the new facility, you know, it became more and more difficult because of the building expense. And we only had the half cent sales tax, so we tried to economize as much as possible. And then you get into cutting staff and trying to economize that way, we've done that a couple of times. And, uh, and so, it's, it's a challenge to continually not be able to give across the board raises. You know, we have had to give some specific areas some increases just to maintain the service. And, uh, and we strategically done that, you know, it's less expensive to pay a little bit of overtime and give a little bit of raise than have a travel nurse or a travel extra person.
Sure.
You know, I call it being penny wise and dollar foolish when we do that. And so, I've tried to be an advocate for taking care of our people, making sure we pay them if we can find them. And always can we find people that can cover our areas that need to be found, uh, need to be covered. You know, and OB was one, and x-ray was another, that we had difficulties recruiting someone to cover those positions. We didn't have a choice but to do travel, uh, employees to take care of those duties and responsibilities, or otherwise we couldn't provide the service.
Right.
And so, we continually fight that battle on day for day, week for week, month for month. I think we secured enough people, you know, we, we get some, we lose some, you know, x-ray was, was fully staffed for a short period of time. And then they always learn away with, uh, better pay, because everybody's struggling with the same type of challenge. You know, all the hospitals, it didn't matter whether you're large, medium, small, or tiny, finding qualified people is a difficult task in this area of the country, uh, and we're getting them to where they'll come to work for you.
But Virgil, what about the employees that are there every day?
Correct, we have some very loyal folks that have toughed it out and have come to work. Some of those we have incentivized to, to make sure they stay and that they don't go off and take our training and our education and, and the investment that we made for them, to them, with them, and take it somewhere else.
Has it been monetary or?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, but it's strategic, uh, and, you know.
What does that mean?
It means that we, we only do it when we absolutely have no other choice.
So, it's not like on January first, you're all getting a per, one percent raise?
No, absolutely not.
So, the, it's on a?
It's by department and by position, uh, that we take a look at those situations, but case by case basis, that's the one we have to. And that's the challenge that we're, that's the difficulty that we're facing. This particular hospital doesn't have a lot of credit, uh, doesn't have any working capital. And so, it makes it very difficult to generate revenue and collect enough to pay for all the things that we need to pay, so.
So, they just need to make themselves indispensable?
Right, you know, and training and education, and sometimes you do that, so, just as soon as you trade, uh, somebody else is trying to get them.
Picks them up.
And we have a local competitor that we venture back and forth, you know, uh, trying to keep our employees. Very little opportunities to share up until this point, um, that we've been able to work that out, share it, please.
Is, is there, what would it take to create a, the hospital's capability to give a raise of a cost of living? What would it, what would it take?
Well, thank the forum report tried to list that and to analyze that. To, to be where we wanna be, we need to increase our revenues by about four million. Which is a tall task, yeah.
Okay.
Or cut enough.
Cut enough.
You know, you gotta do both, and what we try to do is balance the, the two areas where we're, we're looking at our expenses, making sure that we're managing our costs as best we can, at the same time trying to increase revenue. You know, and, uh, you know, we get criticized sometimes for the things that we've done, but we did get good news today. Three forty B for Winfield Medical Arts has been approved, it will go into effect December one, twenty eighteen, that's significant. Every, all patients are eligible for that except for Medicaid, you are gonna get discounted medications. And so, that is something that we have in our availability, uh, and it's starting to pick up to where it's a significant amount of money to assess.
But that still won't help us with our?
It's gonna help us receive a little more funds and the fact that we have two hospital-based rural health clinics, uh, I think that, uh, will help eventually start to get more patients coming to our facility. You gotta have that outpatient base in order to generate patients for your hospital. And we strategically done several things, you know, with the senior care, uh, that has been our stabilization force as far as patients in the hospital, because they can go out and recruit patients all over the area, and bring them to our facility for that type of service. Doctor O'Donnell was here, uh, we met with Wesley Medical Center, he and I were commiserating one day, and I said, "Well, do you see people come through Wesley Medical Center that could use our senior care?" He says, "Absolutely." So, he's gotten us in contact with the right people at Wesley, and we've received three patients in the last month, uh, from Wesley Medical Center. And we've received three patients in the last month, uh, from Wesley Medical Center, and that's just from Wesley Wood, Woodlog, not the main campus. And so we're working every day to try to find ways to get in contact with those folks. I did implement, uh, seeing our patients for our medical needs and our psychiatric needs. I finally convinced Mr. Cooper that we could do that through telemedicine, and, and we've been using that as a venue to get other facilities like the V A. We're gonna put a unit in the V A, and have several nursing homes that we're putting that medical unit in there, so that we have a community, uh, approach to this where they already are knowing what we can do, and we can help take care of those patients in the, uh, those facilities. And when they have a need for our services, make sure they can refer to us.
Okay.
That's good.
Anything else on that, Dan?
Uh, well, we kinda veered off of what do we need to do to be competitive for pay, or can we do, uh, any type of increases? But what I, what I really wanna see here, I, I think we need to see it the board, cause multiple board trustees said something to do with the pay for employees. Is we, we need to know, eh, from a real, you know, from a, on paper standpoint, let's say our average zero to five-year nurse makes
Yeah.
fifteen eighty an hour, but the average in small hospitals in Kansas is seventeen twenty an hour. We need to see that, and, and then you'd say we have twelve employees in that class, so in order for us to be competitive, it's gonna cost us X amount of dollars per year. Or, and we may find some places, and who knows, we may find that they say, well, you know, the, the, uh, you know, the, uh, elevator operators normally only make seven dollars an hour, but we're charging twelve. We're getting charged twelve. I know we don't have an elevator, so that's why, that's why I use that one. Nobody can be offended. But we could find that potentially, but I, I mean, and it's gonna be, it's gonna take some time. But that is something I, I, I wanna, I think we need to, and here for order of priorities, I didn't put that on there first, saying it is priority one. But I know it's been mentioned as a problem, so we need to, as a full trustees, say, do we want that to be tackled, and what priority? But that's what I'd like to see, and that's why I put it on there, and, and based on the feedback from other trustees. Does that make sense?
Yep, yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay, um, so you'll look at getting those numbers. Okay. Is there anything else?
No, I'm, I'm through.
Okay.
Totally.
Yeah, I'm totally, I'm about spent, you know.
Okay. Um, and, uh, so we're going to have an executive session for non-elected personnel?
Well, I'll, I'll mention something else on all those others, and then they go into executive session. So the hospital capabilities and promotion, uh, and, and this was mentioned by another, but, and I don't remember now who said what when I was asking, but it, it seems to me from some of our discussions with people in the community, that they don't know what our hospital can do for them. And so maybe we need to take an audit, or, or maybe there's, you know, make sure that we have those capabilities and they're being marketed. And I'm not sure what efforts have been done there, but, you know, to make sure
Make a list.
That we, we're capturing what we can, and then.
There's a lot of posty things in the hospital that I don't feel like the citizens know. Okay.
Yeah, and we don't, you know, so that is one thing. And then the long-term goals, I know as a, as a board of trustees, we need to lay those out. And I know back in January, there was talk when, uh, at the city commission meeting about a new plan, a five-year plan. Maybe it was a three-year plan, and that that was gonna be unveiled, what I, I believe we, we made. And on top of that, need to do strategic planning and decide what kinda hospital we really wanna be. Cause, uh, I've been reading some articles about small-town hospitals that did turn it around. And most of them, from what I have read, found one area and built their hospital around it. And, uh, you know, found something, whether it was orthopedics, pediatrics, or, or, uh, and, and put that area and marketed that, and everything else grew around it, and, and I'm not by any means trying to, because, be, say I'm the expert on hospitals, uh, and I don't wanna come across as a defense, but, uh, you know, we, we maybe need to decide that, or, you know, and, and see these long-term goals that are already there.
Okay.
And that, then the last one, I'm not sure why I put that on there, the state of the hospital, but I, I forget now. Forgive me.
I think that encompasses everything.
I think we know what the state is and needs money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything further?
Not on that, no.
No, ma'am.
We do need an executive session for ten minutes for, uh, non-elected personnel, and we ask Mr. Watson to come with us.
Is that a motion?
I need one, yeah.
Oh, you need one?
Oh.
I so move that the, the board goes into executive session of non-elected personnel, which includes the trustees and, uh, the CEO, Virgil Watson.
Subject to be discussed.
Non-elected personnel.
Non-elected personnel.
People that are not a choice.
Oh.
An employee, a non-elected employee.
Non-elected employee.
Is that good?
Does that, does that catch it?
It, that's one of the things somehow, yeah.
Do we have an attorney? We don't have an attorney.
Well, I wanna get it right. But I, why can't we have a non-elected personnel? We've done that for.
That's, that's your reason, you have to give a justification. I can give you, the attorney general had a ruling on it.
What did he justify?
Okay.
The justification, what's your view? It's a, it's a broad topic that you'll be discussing, not just non-elected personnel.
I don't have a clue.
I, I can't.
I do know.
You got it down, Dan?
Make it, Dan.
Well, I'm looking it up. There's a, a list of, list of things. This is number one on the list, personnel matters relating to non-elected personnel. So we need to have a, I move, we adjourn to executive session to reconvene at seven fifteen to discuss personnel matters relating to non-elected personnel.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pull the same sign for an executive session.
Any further business afterwards?
No, no, no further business.
It's been moved and, do it again.
I so move the meeting be adjourned. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All pull the same sign. It is adjourned.